We have four of our five directors in attendance. Director Karyell is going to take it tonight. And Superintendent Canton is away at the conference, so we have Assistant Superintendent Clavie joining us up in the guys. Welcome. We also have Ella running us here, Student Board Representative, and we're going to ask her to introduce the regents.
Yes. Ella. I would like the regents to defy the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every true justice for all.
Okay. That takes us to Agenda Item 2.01, Action Item to Approve Our Regular Leading Regent. May I please have a motion to approve a regular leading regent? A motion to approve our regular leading regent.
A second.
The word is seconded. New discussion? Here, now I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
With I, motion passes 4-0. Which brings us to Agenda Item 3.01, Public Comment. We have one public comment tonight. I'm going to read this first before we get started on that. Just a reminder, each person will be given three minutes per topic to comment, and a maximum of 20 minutes per any one topic will be allowed. Speakers whose comments are less than three minutes in length may not defer their remaining time to others. If there are multiple speakers on one topic, speakers may be limited to points of view not yet expressed. Any person wishing his or her comments were retained as part of the permanent record may submit a prepared statement to the Board Secretary prior to the oral presentation. The President may interrupt or terminate an individual's statements to lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Comments or concerns relative to district personnel will not be heard about. Rather, they should be directed through the complaints concerning school personnel or programs policy for 220. Formal presentations must be scheduled for the superintendent and writing will later than Tuesday, and you can one me proceed to the meeting. And like I said, we've got one public comment tonight from Val. How do you know?
I'm the Department of President, Board Representatives, Student Board Representative, and Assistant Superintendent. I want to thank you for your service and for your hard work. There's an action item 5.04 tonight, Updated Tech Plan Budget, which sort of speaks to my heart and a lot of work that has gone into that over the years, and so appreciate the hard work that's gone into that. I do want to share that from my perspective, I am a big fan of public comment at meetings and have been since the very first time I offered public comment in 2005 to Seattle Civic Council, which is where we formerly lived. First, from this position, it affords the opportunity to influence, engage, provide extended perspective on issues that those in the service may not be able to reach for all of the work that they are otherwise doing, and it's a chance to see or be aware of other things that require care, passion, and bravery. Second, from the position of a seat such as yours, receiving public comment for me has always been an opportunity to welcome, listen, learn, connect, expand my own perspective, and push myself to work harder. My mantra, for those who know me well, has always been, if you're going to offer public comment, be respectful, be fact-based, and offer solutions, and be consistent. If you have a drum to beat, continue to beat it. Leadership does imply working hard. It goes without saying. And the intent of always looking beyond for ways to become something even better requires deep listening and opportunity for others to speak. Celebrations like what we have tonight and in every board meeting are sustainable because of hard work, of always looking for ways to improve and be better at this. Tonight's agenda also includes an action item 5.05 regarding a cell tower contractor renewal. In this situation, I would wonder, as someone in your seat, with no pre-discussion, having received that document on Friday and its deep content, whether or not that is a two-meeting process in order to digest what's there, have a free dialogue, you know, with three minutes afforded each of you in discussion tonight. Thank you, and I appreciate your work.
That brings us to Agenda 4.01, Student Board Representative Report. We've got Ella in here. What do you have for us?
All right, so, starting out with our climate and culture, based on our current expectations, we have our ASV elections that are happening tomorrow. So we have a wide variety of individuals who have been working hard and campaigning to try and earn that role. And one thing that I've noticed, and the other school board representatives have noticed, is their large emphasis on culture and creating a very welcoming and belonging culture at Tohoma High School. So we're really looking forward to hearing their speeches tomorrow and seeing who wins. With our high expectations, we have a lot going on, so just to start off, we had our robotics team at Worlds in Houston just recently, and they competed against 77 teams in 10 qualification matches, placing fourth overall in those matches. They did say that they faced a lot of challenges and technical difficulties, but they were able to overcome those and ended up placing 17th out of over 3,000 teams. So that's a major accomplishment for them. Moving on, we have Me the People. They competed over the weekend, and they did an outstanding job. They got seventh in the nation, which is super awesome. They worked really hard all year long, so it was really great to see their hard work pay off. Next, we have Deca Internationals, which is happening in Orlando, Florida right now. We're still waiting on the results, but it sounds like they're doing really awesome, so I'm excited to see the end result of that. Next weekend, we have Clockmaker's Daughter, which is our musical, our spring musical that our drama club is putting on. That's going to be really exciting. They always put in so much effort into those, and I've gone to multiple of them the years, and it never disappoints, so I'm excited to see that one. And then our last kind of piece for this is AP exams, kind of a big topic for all of our students. As someone who's been through the AP exam program, it's a very rigorous process. It takes up a lot of time, but ultimately it's very rewarding in the end, and so I'm excited for students to see their hard work pay off. And then a huge part of these last couple weeks has been focusing on student wellness. And so we've had S-Back testing, and so for students who aren't participating in that testing, they have the opportunity to attend a few assemblies, and those included Speaker Tony Hoffman, who talked about addiction, recovery, and mental health. And that was the super powerful assembly, and it was led by our SAMHOP club, which stands for Student Advocates for Mental Health and Addiction. And then I was actually able to be in a classroom, and he came to, around to a couple classrooms, and we were able to ask some more specific questions, and really just felt like we already had a relationship with him, even after meeting him that day. And then actually today, we had Cara Filler come in to talk about the choices that we make and how we can make better choices. She had a very powerful story, and listening to her journey through her seeing other people not making the best choices, and her experience from that was very powerful. And then to kind of end things here, last week, we had a help fair put up by our very wonderful P department, and this basically displayed a couple of different resources and local businesses that can reach out to our students to show them where they can get counseling services or even local gyms, and all of that really just tying into our focus on student wellness.
What's going on?
Yeah?
Emma? That's going to bring us to Section 5 of our agenda, and as we move into the presentations, discussion, and action items portion, I'd like to remind my fellow board directors that we have agreed to use round robin to ensure that each member has an equal opportunity to speak. We'll keep our discussion length for Agenda under 20 minutes, which I'll monitor and individual board members' discussion for three minutes per Agenda Item, which is the overall regardless. The instructors' time will begin with first word they speak, and we'll continue through the responses that are provided. We'll move to Agenda Item 5.01, which is a nationally ranked tuba player, Luke Sleeman. We're in for a treat tonight, and Tohoma High School Principal Judy Belbo is approaching the podium, and actually going to introduce. Hi, Judy.
Hi. Thanks so much for having me here tonight. Such a honor. Ella, you did a beautiful job.
Thank you.
Boy, we do have a lot going on, 20 hundred kids, and Luke is another great example of our students and just how they're thriving. I heard Luke's story recently and was just fascinated by it, because I honestly didn't know much about the world of tuba playing, but when I listened to him speak about it and nationally ranked tuba player, I thought you guys needed to hear it as well. So we have amazing students, and Luke is just one of them, so I would introduce to you Luke.
Hi. Who's this?
Mr. Garcia.
Excuse me. Hello. Thank you all for taking a couple minutes out of your schedule to let me share a little bit of myself. My name is Lucian. I'm a sophomore from Tohoma High School. To be honest with you, I'm a little nervous to speak here. In fact, when Mr. Vice supposed to give me the opportunity to speak tonight, I actually thought I was in trouble. At least, I was surprised to find that I'd be talking about how I spend the summers. I played a tuba in Mr. Cole's support class in a contrabass in the marching band. I'm sure you all sing in the marching band even at halftime of our home football games, but we may not notice that the Tohoma Field Show Ensemble is a competition band, in fact, one of the best in the area. From my perspective, when Mr. Cole is there here at Tohoma, it's nothing short of amazing. I'm sure you can identify that teaching fundamentals in marching music in drill to 100 students is a large task for him. That's why year in and year out, he builds up student leaders within the program to help to assist the younger students in getting out to speed. One of the tools at his disposal is the summer marching program, DCI. DCI Drum Corps International is a marching organization that has 22 world-class scores, largely considered the marching major leagues, as well as 15 open-class organizations which are geared more towards high school-level students, looking to break the competitive marching. Each corps, regardless of size, typically consists of 130 to 165 young adults ranging in ages 15 to 20. During the summer competition season, each corps of the Fan Outback US taking over schedule over a hundred shows, spanning over 40 states that will lead them on to Indianapolis, Indiana, and move to SoCal Stadium on the secondary practice for the DCI West Summer Championships. Next slide, please. Last year, I chose to audition in Santa Clara Bandarmer's, an open-class corps out of California, and on June 19, flew to Santa Clara to start a summer. It's important to note that Drum Corps is not just marching band. Bandarmer cadets, like most corps, operate on a 16-hour-per-day, seven-day week schedule, with one rest day around every 15 days for longer recovery. ESPN, as part of their two-hour documentary on sport marching, highlighted the physical condition that takes to be ten other at DCI. They hired Dr. Jeff Edwards, the terror physical education and athletic training at Indiana State University. He measured the metabolic rate in the form of heart rate, oxygen consumption, and carbohydrate set production of one of the members of the cavalry from the uniform. I won't bore with the details. I've linked the video from my final slide if anyone has interest in watching. But to summarize, Dr. Edwards found that the people marching at this level had oxygen consumption equal generally level equal to that of a well-conditioned pair of 100 g during their performance, and a heart rate generally equal to that of someone running at 400 g per minute. Next slide, and you can look again. Underneath, correct? That was the final 40 minutes of the Fan Outback's last show, 40 seconds of the Fan Outback's last show last year. I took a cool day with the cadets, started with a 7:00 AM wake-up, gave everyone an hour to get up, get showered, eat breakfast, and get ready. Morning calistics began eight, typically in the form of jogging and stretching. Since the midsummer months in the Midwest and South are hot, we spend a cool mornings on the field for marching a lot until noon. After that, we have an hour for lunch, followed by four hours of hating and shake practicing and using. We've been in Howard and another hour for dinner, typically around 5:00 or 6:00, and then back on the field for full ensemble work for another four hours. We then get an hour to meet with our captains and get ready for bed, then go to sleep, and wake up the next morning and do it all again. Our performance season started in California, where we found immediate success. We won the DCI West Open Class Championship before heading out to the across the US, winning every show we attended. On August 19, we completed the open class season by winning the national championship in overwhelming fashion. We were finished there, next we set off to compete in the DCI World Championships, finishing 15th, with socks beating a round five course, world-class scores. It was a successful run we had last year, but set safe for undoing this year. Part of the first camp to our auditions for the 2023 season, I was invited to audition with three different league world-class scores. During our long Thanksgiving weekend, I flew up to Rockford Elementary to audition and sign a contract with the family. A two-time DCI champion who has the distinction of making DCI finals every since 1974, has most ownership of what some posts in the sport would call the greatest show in DCI history, 2008's Warpedes. There are things that I hope to accomplish in DCI, things that I know I'll accomplish. First, I hope that this year I'll get a chance to break loose down from a performer from Tohoma and take the field for world finals competition, you know, almost under feet from a high school soccer marching contract. I also hope that one day before I'm forced to age out that I walk off the field as a DCI world-class champion. Next, there are things that I know happen. I know my time at DCI will be used for the rest of my life. Things like discipline, humility, and self-confidence are obvious, but there's more. I want to be a productive member of the team. I want to have respect for my craft, not only for my craft, but for the skills and contributions of the people around me, as well as a real strong lesson in working hard to be almost impossible. I also know the point of release, I'll bring back the skills I learned to the 2023 Tohoma Field Show Ensemble. I'll be Mr. Cole, another student leader, to help bring new members up to speed, and with luck, give some of our veteran members the courage to follow through with their marching to the next level, be a DCI college marching band. Thank you all for your time. Do you have any questions?
We will certainly do. We have a good time. I'm certain we have gods with questions, so any type of question.
Yes, I have all the questions. So I am curious, first of all, how did you decide to take up the tuba of all the different instruments you could have chosen?
Well, I started playing the trumpet and then the French horn, but when I was in like sixth grade, my sister's boyfriend played the contror at the high school, and I just thought it was way too little, so I might have put it to him when I was in high school.
Yeah, it was destiny. Are they still together?
No.
No? That's great. Okay, next question. What are you planning on doing with this long-term? Because I would assume that you have plans.
Yeah, I play in the University of Utah, and I plan to use my marching experience to try and get a scholarship for the marching band.
Okay, and why did you pursue?
Uh, certainly.
This is important.
Okay. Excellent. Okay. I have more, but I'm going to share.
You prefer?
Yes.
Okay. Is that a graphic?
Wow, you are extraordinary. You gave me goosebumps with your speech and with the video, and you are just a pretty exceptional kid. I am curious, what, I'm very, I love arts, and so I'm really curious, how does music compete? Why music and how does it, why, like, what does it bring?
I'm not really sure. It's a really big community thing. It like brings a group, what is it, 130 to 165 people together, and it's really awesome when you have that connection that tight with that many people. I mean, staying with people for 85 days straight, living in the same house and doing the same thing together really brings you close together, and it's just a really awesome thing.
Thank you.
Well, likewise, when I heard that we were going to have a nationally-ranked tuba player join us for the next meeting, I thought for sure you would be a senior. And for a second, I thought maybe you wouldn't be a senior, and I thought for sure you would be a junior. So well done of you on the determination and everything else that's gotten here. Really exciting. You've talked a little bit about, you talked a lot about the conditioning you need to have to accomplish this, but apart from that, you need to memorize the charts, you need to memorize the choreography, you need to be able to play with your tone and everything else, and there's 100 different things going on in those 40 seconds that we watched right there. You know, what are the things that, that, you know, you're working on that you're challenged still, even though you're so accomplished? I mean, I'm sure there's things within that realm that you're still working away at, and other things that you're, you know, most proud of, or the varying things along, all those different skills that you have to balance or pull off?
Like the different things that you like bring together, like show?
Yeah.
So that was not my show, that was the hours that I'm marching this year, it's a show from last year.
Got it.
Shows generally are 12 to 15, 12 to 13 minutes. You get like 15 minutes on the field, off the field time. Our show had 85 different sets, like where you're staying on the field, you have to move to, somehow sub-sets, well, all of them have sub-sets that you have to come to. And then as well as five minutes of music, which is around 10 pages of music, and a choreography, but it really all comes together, like when you're learning it, like all the music lines up with the drill, it lines up with the choreo and what I'm doing. So it really is just like bringing everything together, just to make a piece of art.
Yeah. I found it on the Youtubes and watched a couple of those, and it's an easy watch, it's fascinating.
Yeah.
Great music, great movement, cueing, you know, just, you know, count off and whatever, it's just, you know, great. So thank you so much, and congratulations on having me in the conference.
Thank you.
Hold on, one more, one more. Sorry. Where did you stay once upon a time?
University of Utah.
Oh. I just came out from digging my son up from college, and amazing, had amazing winter for stuff, so.
Yeah, that's what I'm hoping for.
Yeah. When you were speaking, it was, it was really kind of interesting to me, because it was, it was about you, but it was really nothing about you. And you were giving homage to like this thing, the band and the team, and your contribution to the greater thing. And so I'm always, I'm always interested in like successful people, and that strikes me, like I hear that, I see that as a common thing, like it's not about, it's not about things, you're about plugging into a greater kind of purpose. And so what has, what has this being in this, this thing, this band, whether it's Tohoma or whether it's this nationally-forming band, like what does it mean to you? And what would you say to other people who are looking for that, looking for that thing, that bigger thing that they can kind of plug themselves into?
Well, it means, I mean, it means everything. My parents, even when I call home to them about a month, well, I'm gone, I tell them that I never want to be here. This is where I want to be, because it gives you a feeling of belonging, like when you're in those groups. Other people looking to find that, I would say join other groups that you can do better. We have lots of programs at Tohoma that offer a group setting, and if you have the mindset of, I'm doing this to make the group a better thing, then you feel more connected with the group.
I appreciate that. One more, we've got a student board here, Ella, who's going to ask a question.
Yeah, so out of all the experiences that you've had being a tuba player, what's your favorite, and we're out of everything, and why?
Probably us sneaking into a pool, like one in the morning that has a sun. About 40 kids and like the pitch flags just swimming around. Thank you.
It's community, yeah, it's just community.
I remember standing in 110 degrees, I'll just, they only had the tubas on, but everybody else was breaking long and shake. We were just standing out there like this, with the tubas up, had attentions, and they were adjusting our dots, and we just had to stand there while they adjusted. I think five of those broke down with each other that day, but it's, it's the hard things that you remember. You remember being on the field, working, you don't remember any shows. I don't have any memory of being in a show, other than somebody taking a photo of the camera for on the road.
Is your jacket found?
Yeah, this was a Santa Clara make-up jacket, this where I marched also.
Oh, that's adorable.
Before you leave speaking photographs, would you mind coming up and go and get a picture of this?
Yeah. Let me come back.
Just right here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Like this. Look at me, just put.
Come on, come on, come on, come on, come on. Come on up close, yeah.
That's what I'm doing.
I heard you.
Oh, you're good.
Yeah, we're just. I'm scared.
Keep up the good work. We also know that it's a school night, so no offense if I just happened to hear, not a big deal. Thank you for joining us, Luke and family.
Thank you.
That'll bring us to Agenda Item 5.02, which is our extended version of program update. Assistant Director of Operations Kyle Hood is coming over to the podium and maybe some friends.
Yes. Is it possible to do an official request to not go after Luke? Yeah, she's amazing.
Yeah. You can make it request. Pretty cool stuff. So tonight, Deborah, the first one, not able to be pleasant person, never scratch, wasn't feeling that great, so she's in spirit with us. She also has Colleen and Natalie, they'll be speaking a little bit to our EP characters as well. It's all right. The first thing that I want to point out is this part right here, is our beliefs, and that's a big part of what we're going to be talking about tonight, as if I need to put the mic just way back over, a hard time still. The success of EEP depends on each of us working together as a cohesive team, positivity, and kindness. I don't know if y'all have heard about this thing called COVID. COVID really, really hit our EEP program. When, when schools were shut down, and we were trying to figure out how to keep our communities going, our EP staff stepped up and were, were taking care of our first responders, nurses, those students who were in our program. They just playing with me.
Sorry.
From that, when we were coming out of that, we were finding that our team coming together, that power was missing, that we had six sites for EEP, but those six sites weren't necessarily having that time, that, that energy of coming together and saying, hey, let's, let's look at this as an entire program, not just each of our own silos, and that's nobody's fault, it's the circumstance of what cars were dealt and make valiant ones. When we came together, when I say we, our team came together, this, this was the, depends on each of us working together. It's not just Glacier Park saying, hey, we're doing a great thing over here, and Tohoma Elementary over here saying, oh, yeah, we're doing our thing.
No, we said we'd be doing it better.
They did say they were doing it better. Wait, so they didn't know? So I just wanted to point that out, because so much of what we're talking about tonight has to do with that. This didn't change all, because the next slides are based off of this. This is where we were as a group. We had quite a few reds, a few yellows. We chose things, and when I say we, it was the team, it wasn't even necessarily we that chose, it was the team chose things that were all struggling, that we wanted to improve ourselves, improve our program. From that, over the last year, we have multiple areas where we've seen some amazing progress. Within the site team and district team, we wanted to make sure that we were coming together as a group, incorporating a variety of lessons into and learning new educational classroom management strategies that has to do with our team coming together and doing some training, which is natural for me, too. Engaging in online courses and staff trainings, wanting to come together as a group and doing that. And then common lines of communication, participating in regularly-studied site manager meetings, and then connecting with other people on our programs, the team students, the site building managers, have little boxes that's supposed to click, and let's go up through there. My part that I want to talk about is our team meetings where we came together. We started scheduling regular meetings where all of our site managers would come together and say, what are we doing throughout our programs? What are areas that we care? And from there, organically, it's, well, I had that situation, this is what I do with my kids, or I need some help, oh, I can provide some of that over there. From those site manager meetings, there was requests to start including building managers, that as a group, building manager also helped to support you. So we started to invite the building managers in our last meetings, all of those building managers were showing up, and they get to hear about, here's some of the struggles that are happening with you, and then the responses are, here's something we can support. And sometimes it's that cross-pollination of, maybe it's working well, I'm going to throw some of the others, this is the actual inclination part, and then that building manager adjusts and says, hey, this is what we did, and then that helps out, maybe just help. So. managers were showing up. And they get to hear about, here's some of the struggles that are happening with you. And then responses are, here's something we can support. And sometimes it's that cross culmination of, maybe it's working well, I'm going to throw some of that, this is the actual inclination part. And then that building manager adjusts and says, hey, this is what we did, and then that helps out, maybe just so. Going back to that very first slide of as a team coming together, we are finding that we that first, and then the impacts of our students are coming. So before I say all the words, Colleen, I'm sorry, I want you to share a little bit about this list of what you are seeing and what your experience is.
Okay. When, when I came to EEP six years ago, there was a lot of independent work happening in sites and not a lot of cohesive handwork group, you know. And so like when we would come together over spring break and we would all be working together with kids, we were still working as six independent sites, even though we were in one room. In those last six years, especially this last year, I have seen a lot more team bonding. We've started to practice like having one theme and everybody takes part of that theme and provides a piece of it and then we build a cohesive week and everybody's working together. That, I'm sorry to say them a lot, but that has brought us together as a team and has helped us really build a strong union and become more dependent on one another. So I like that, I like that we've been having very good meetings. I love that the building managers are there. I think that we do a lot of the work and because we're all in different schools, you don't always be, you're not able to put faces to names. And so when we get an email from Natalie, you're like, well, I don't know who Natalie is, but having Natalie come to the meeting, now I know who Natalie is and I can put a face to that and she can put a face to my name. And it makes it a lot more personal and builds those connections that bring us together and make us work as a block, as a group. So I think that Kyle's been doing an amazing job fostering that and that has come about because of the EEP cares. So we are building a great, good basis and foundation in the, in our solid team.
And you brought some stuff.
I did. So just in case, I'm sure you're all aware that today is National Penguin Day. And I'm sure that you've all been celebrating with your Black and White coffees, Oreo cookies, chocolate dipped ice cream cones. My students made you guys some cards. These are penguins. Some of them are very well embellished, some of them are tiny, but you get some cards. I'm going to throw some over here too. As a thank you, they had fun making them today and then they said, well, what's a school board? And I said, well, they're kind of the people who are in charge of the principals, would you like a card?
Yeah.
And, okay, well, you guys, you were tired and they were very, very impressed that you're in charge of their principal. I got two more. So the kids had fun making those today and that's another thing that, my school highlights in their school notes what day it is. So, you know, who knew penguins had a day? I didn't know, but now you guys do. So we've been doing fun things to celebrate that and incorporate it into our curriculum. There was National Oreo Cookie Day, did you know that? I did not know Oreo cookies had their own day. So we brought Oreo cookies at it. So just little fun things, but there's your penguins. So when you go home tonight, make sure you celebrate National Penguin Day. We watched March of the Penguins in the EEP today, so they got to learn a little bit. How many of you know what a group of penguins is called?
I've not heard.
Anybody? No, those are brochures. It's a waddle.
A waddle?
And that's if it's on land. If it's in the ocean, what do you think it's called? So uninformed you are. It's a raft. Now, I have taught you something. And my kids learned that today too.
And before we even add the cover, that's the enrichment, extended enrichment that we have for our students.
It's a biggie.
It's a biggie. One of the interesting things that I've come about, and I have expected, half hope is that we come about is as we started having these, these group exchanges, there became, there was a comfort level that wasn't there before to ask challenging questions and to challenge other staff members of, hey, when we're seeing this, and this is kind of what the expectation is, we're having those holding each other accountable conversations. And along with that came the, well, how do we get better? It's the training aspect. There's been a request for training multiple times, which what Natalie's going to share about, we've had some really good opportunities, I think we can have more opportunities for training, we're working towards that, like I want Natalie to share a little bit on that.
Okay. So I represent our deans at our elementary schools and something that's really important to us as a team is when we are supporting our EEP programs, that we're providing them training that they want, that they see a need and they want it. So one of the requests that we recently had was, we want something interactive and we want something we can actually do with our kids. We get it and we use it. And so a training that we recently did was around games you can play that also support social emotional connections. So they're doing games where they're learning how to cheer each other on. They're learning games where they know how to lose well, which is really hard sometimes. And where they know when someone wins, they're all supporting each other. There's games where their team members are interacting together and there's games where they're learning how to do different roles, like leadership roles or organizational roles. And so we had a training and we were able to provide our EEP programs with the, I mean, I'm not even kidding, I think it was like this thing, a booklet with games. And the training was phenomenal, he was, the speaker was really engaging and then we were able to, we got them up. It was very well attended by our EEP staff and we got them up and we played the games. And they identified games within that brochure or pamphlet, I don't know, big booklet, let's call it, that they were able to say, hey, this is one we're going to try out. And they taught it to each other. So there was also the collaboration and the identifying of things that might work. And I only heard positive things from our Glacier Park EEP and talking with Colleen and Deborah, it sounds like it's been well received in their programs as well. So this next request that they had for training from our deans is how to have hard conversations with parents when we need to inform them in a caring way of ways we can support their students, their children. And also how to have hard conversations with kids to help them learn and grow, with the understanding that kids will make mistakes, we all make mistakes, we know better, we do better, but we have to have those learning moments. And it has to be a growth conversation, not a consequence conversation. So that will be the next training that we're going to be getting into those teams to support our EEP staff, because it's what they requested and what they want.
And I want to acknowledge, when we say, hey, there's something we're supposed to be really good at, but we have a weakness as a team, we say we want to be better and that, that's hard. We have our EEP site managers and our assistants that we get to communicate with parents, but when we say we don't think we're good enough, we'd like some training in that, to step outside and say, this is a weakness and I want to get better. It's really easy to just pretend or keep going in the rough room. So being able to hear that and provide that, I think is absolutely amazing. So the next question is, okay, that's what we've done, what are we going to do? Colleen, along with two others, Mickey and, is it?
Erica.
Erica, she's been on that, have started to develop and are ready to push out the survey if I want, if you're willing to chat about a little bit about that, how are we going to recognize or improve on?
So one of the things that we talked about in, in one of our meetings was taking the temperature of our end user. Who's our end user? It's our families. And seeing whether or not they feel that we are providing a good program or what can we do that is different. So the way that we thought we'd do that is with an EEP parent survey, which we've been working hard on, lots of questions, and we're ready to roll it out. Like Kyle said, one of the things we're hoping to do with it is to compile it by site and then present those results to each of the sites, like, oh, your parents feel you're doing amazing with greeting everybody at the door by name, but you sparked a little love in this area. So this is where you could improve that. And then ring everybody up, hopefully. You know, when you do a survey or you ask a person, how are you doing? You're not going to hear the positives as much as you might hear the negatives. So we're all prepared for that. Nobody runs over and says, oh my God, I went to Piggles and got the best service. They're going to go home and say, oh, they put apples on my hamburger again. So you hear negatives. We're hoping we hear some positives, but we're prepared. And we're looking forward to the growth moments that might bring and some consistency in all of our programs so that we are all greeting students by name, so that all of our kids feel valued and heard and seen, so that our parents know who we are and feel comfortable coming to us with whatever issues, or we can feel comfortable going to them with issues. So that's what we're kind of hoping with our parent survey. It's 99% ready, we're going to present it one more time to site managers and then hopefully roll it out. So that's for wrap.
All right, so I think I have one question. There it is. Any questions from the board?
My question was, and thank you for this, and thank you for all the work that you're doing because it is such an important piece of our choice day. And it's, it's really great to see all the progress that you're making and all the systems that you have in place. My question is, along the lines of looking at family survey, how, do you have any pieces that are implemented that give you a chance to hear the student voice there, in the, you know, the climate culture and the atmosphere and the progress?
Well, I can't speak for all the sites, but at my sites, my kids are very vocal and they have no problem coming up and saying, Miss Colleen, we feel like blah, 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 or how come we don't get to do this, or whatever it is, you know? Or the taco truck is broken, I need it anymore. And I think for me, if you're watching your students and if you're paying attention to what's happening, you see the opportunities. Look, this group is really into that, I should provide some support pieces so that they can have that activity. Or, hey, the kids had a great time playing this game, we need to keep that going or find other things like that. So I do a lot of following my kids. One of the things that's coming up, and I probably shouldn't say this, but we have a budget and then I have money left. And I will sit my kids down and say, hey, guys, I got money left. What would you like me to buy, like toys or games or, you know, activities? And we'll talk about that and I'll go out and get it if it's feasible or if it makes sense, I'll do it. So I give my kids a voice. I don't know that I want to add a survey, but I'm open to hearing. I think one of the things that, for me, it's really, you don't get too much opportunity to see what parents are thinking. I'm also hoping parents talk to their kids. Like some of the questions are, what do you like, what does your copy kid like about EEP? What did it not like?
Yeah.
Well, I'm hoping that stimulates some conversations, so.
The short answer is we don't have some from your crosswalk system, so we need professionals.
Okay, I get to go. So I, first of all, I want to say that throughout this presentation, I continue to see so many opportunities to celebrate the work that you are doing and the work that your team is doing. You're being so proactive about identifying areas where you could continue to grow and serve students in new and different ways that they can really have the true enriching experience that you want for them. And so I'm just so impressed with everything that you're doing. My question is related to the list of things, if you go back just a couple. Obviously you all came up with a great list of different areas where you could focus. How did you decide that those would be the first six that you would tackle?
So I can answer that. And I think those naturally fell within we needed to get together system. It wasn't necessarily, hey, which ones can we watch first, but we do, we needed to get together first and, and start to have some hard conversations. And from that, those areas came. So I guess there's a reverse engineering of the process. Don't tell any of my EEP staff, but I really like to get those sort of things and sometimes you just have to get together and nudge a group a certain way. And that's my, I don't want to say it's, it was a boat. Yeah, let's do a 3B and 3C. That's.
It doesn't always have to be a boat, I was just curious. Yeah, yeah, no, I wasn't judging, I was just curious how you identified those.
It was a dark one.
Yeah. Well, thank you, I'm, I'm really grateful. Obviously this has taken a lot of intentionality, strategic thinking, a lot of hours and commitment and clearly you've made great progress and I'm so excited to see it in our next presentation, the nudges forward and the momentum that you continue to build, because it's in service of our kids and that's so evident in every single word that you spoke tonight. It is so clear that you love the students that are in your care and that's going to impact in their lives for their entire lifetime. So thank you.
Well said, and I, I'd say that similar thoughts went through my mind, but the word connection kept coming up, that you all are doing a very intentional and thoughtful and student-centered job of connecting with one another, connecting with your building environment, connecting across sites, connecting with your families and students and all of that kind of in service of creating a better experience for everyone involved and together we're better. I really love that. The, the question that came to my mind was if that, you're obviously have been intentional about your approach to this and you described some results that you're seeing as a team of adults, and I'm wondering if you're seeing any improvement in the, you know, call it attitude, behavior, et cetera, students that you're working with, if that is leaking out to them as well or if it's kind of playing through. And so I'm curious if there's, if there's any observations or experiences you would have to share about any changes you're seeing, you know, student behavior.
So I can measure that by the times we come together in a big group. So like over the period of spring break or Christmas break, those, those situations. I think being more cohesive as site managers has made it so that the kids know all of us and can relate to us easier. When I first started taking over, I'd kind of be like, well, I don't know the Glacier Park kids, I don't know the. But they get to know you if you make an intentional effort to be there and if you're supporting each other, they're like, oh, there's Mr. Kyle, there's Miss Colleen. I walk in now at spring break and they're like, oh, Miss Colleen, and I'm giving hugs and, and they're not even my kids, they're not my TS kids, but they are my kids and I spend a lot of time with them. So I would say yes, I think that it has helped because if we're a group, they recognize us as a group, we spend time with each other and the kids are receiving that, they're sorting that, if that makes sense, any sense to you? Yeah.
Maybe if I get a man to speak, she covered as a break supervisor, winter break and mid-winter break, yeah, team, you know, cover spring break, but maybe just the lack of calls you receive.
Yeah. Well, what I was thinking too is like at Glacier Park, we have a new assignment, fairly new and it's pretty new to the EEP. And with these opportunities of coming together, she gets to see Colleen and Deborah in action, who have been doing this for a long time. And what I appreciated is the phone calls I did receive over breaks or the, I go in and work sometimes on different, like not student days of EEP would be there. And the conversations that we would have were more problem solving conversations, help me know how to support this student instead of take this kid, kind of, I don't know what to do with them, but you do, because you're a D. I feel like that energy has shifted in our EEP program because it's been more of a puppy learn experience from our managers, our site managers, instead of a, I gotta pass this one off. So I think that is a growth area because that goes to show that they're, they're watching from each other how to handle different student scenarios, they're seeking advice from their deans when they need it, then they want to try something different, but they're not saying, I don't want to do it, they're saying, I want to learn how. And they are the ones that are working with the child to help them grow. So I think that has a significant growth in just their cooperation together. I'll bounce off that too, is that while we're there working, we will look at each other and go, is this something you need to call them about? No, let's handle that. And so we're prioritizing and dealing with, rather than running to somebody and saying, ah, mom, dad, we're doing it. Yeah, there.
You hear a magic beep.
There's a beep, we are going to go, you said. You? Yeah, we were right, so.
Keep, keep that. Sorry, okay.
Oh, no, you're fine.
Good.
I just wanted to thank you so much for your time tonight. It's really great to hear about all of those different successes and I really liked the emphasis on team building and that cohesion. My question is kind of what are your next steps once you get the data from the surveys? What are you planning on doing that or even where kind of in that chart are you planning on moving on to?
So really what comes back at the survey is going to help drive where do we go next? If it comes back, we're doing great, then we go ask ourselves, where else can we go? If it comes back and the information isn't so great, the first step is to have site managers. We don't want to air dirty laundry in front of everybody and say, hey, look, this site's doing great and this one doesn't. Those are, those are some pretty sensitive things. We have people that really care about their program and if the feedback isn't all positive, that brings up feelings. So having those, I'll call it strategic. So having those, I'll call it strategic conversations of here's where we are now, team, team, where or how are we getting? I can direct them on what we're going to do, but there's no buy-in. When they have those conversations and say, how are we going to improve? That's where the power is. That's where that dimension is. So that's, the survey is really going to drive what we do next. My guess is student family and staff. It's just focusing on that. That's where I believe.
Well, thank you so much. A lot of wonderful growth going on. Ms. Colleen, we really appreciate these darling lovely thoughtful cards. So nice of you to bring this for us. Thank you for all the work you're doing. It's an incredibly valuable program and so important to so many families. Keep it up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that will bring us to agenda five point zero three, which is the technology department to home appears update. And technology supervisor, and friends.
Oh, my gosh, there's so few.
Aren't here. Welcome.
Thank you, board. You're excited to be here? So I have with me Joseph Ruriz, he's one of our technicians, works throughout the district, and Jan Gucio, who's our administrative assistant. Ground, boot on the ground is Joe and Jan is really the heart and soul of our, of our department, our mom of her. She's, these are two great representatives from our department that are supporting the work that we're doing. So, yeah. So when I first started here, they figured kind of it was just coming into fruition and we were starting to build out what that meant for us. I was still trying to understand my job of district, among other things. So my initial round of this didn't really meet the expectations of what I think we're at now and where we want to get to. So I adjusted most of our, our dashboard items and have adopted some of these more descriptive items that other departments have used to kind of identify where we're at, where we're going and the plans that we'll have in the future. It's better understanding and better target actually than what I had done before. To review, this is our overall core responsibilities, beliefs and values. I won't go through reading this whole thing, but during our weekly team meetings, which has come from one of these parish plans, we reflect our values each time, which we value teamwork, customer service, integrity and development. We feel that these are core values that go to everything that helps to bring what tone it is into the technology department and how we help support our staff and students. This is the pinwheel of our parish goals. These items, these goals are all highlighted on our chart, which coming up here on this next one. This is my original chart, our, our original chart, where instead of having a dashboard of where we're at and where we're going, we create a dashboard of what are expectations of success we do at the end of our parish goals of the work that's been done. And if it met the accomplishment that we're trying to do. It's very difficult to see growth with that sort of a, of a metric. So in working with the team and adjusting this, we've now come up with different key actions. Adjust the dashboard measures to show where we've actually improved, plans that we've discussed. And some just ideas that we need to do to meet, meet these goals in the end. I'm going to touch on each of these as I go forward here, so I'm not going to cover them here. But as we get into it, our equity goals, the three green items here are all rather new improvements. These did not exist during our original development. The supporting testing has always been a big problem here as far as keeping items in stock, being able to have all students test on a device that meets the needs. We solidified that through the course of our next levy and by the end of the next levy cycle, all of our students are going to be on a device that they would control. We don't have to keep backstopping, keep items on hand. It's just sitting there wasting. Helping enhance the students and be able to control kind of their, their own destiny with their devices and give them that responsibility. Classroom standardization, where COVID really kind of destroyed what that classroom environment looked like. When we came back to the classroom, everything was all over the place. We had different projectors, different computers, different missing items. So bringing that technology to the classroom, bring equity to every student. So every student, every classroom across the entire district will have the same look and feel as they go through the, go through the classes. They won't, they won't be encountering something that is less than what they had prior. Also goes to help our visiting teachers, our guest teachers and our substitutes. So they can stop in any room and not have to learn the technology because they already would have learned it somewhere else. Student device lifecycle, that is, it's kind of a minor thing and you'd think it would be built into our, our idea from the get-go. But with the BYD problem, cycling that through is a plan that we have in place. And it's, it's going to aid the, the student development within the secondaries and then moving into high school. Properly aligning our, our equity needs, it really does mean that we have to meet these as soon as they grow. It's not just right now, that student in their current spot, working through the years. Taking an extra step, so this is something at the high school, we're working with some hearing impaired students using simple Bluetooth microphone, where they would give that to their teacher and through using the use of teams, they are able to get a transcription of the teacher's presentation. It's saved or you have a later time or read it in real time as the class goes on. So they're able to still engage, interact, ask questions and did the same experience as the rest of the classmates. It's been working very well with one student so far. We haven't had too many other requests yet that we've had to try to fill. But it is something that we can scale out as needed as we get more requests. Further development is needed and it's something that we're hoping to work with the different staff groups that support these students. This is a rather new item. Minecraft, Minecraft coding is something that's been worked into the secondary curriculum next year in middle schools. We never had the ability to do this on our Chromebooks. It's been a difficult problem because of the way that that's handled is by an 18 plus only software solution. And creating a curated version, our, one of our engineers was able to get this pushed out. So now our Chromebooks are both very compliant and able to meet the curriculum need to support Minecraft throughout the district wherever it's seen. Now, this is a photo of students that's on a trail who are doing a social studies experiment where they're flipping a house using Minecraft to code in the development of what it was beforehand and then going through work as a team to develop different strategies around flipping that house, selling it, remodeling. So it's kind of an interesting program. I think it's worth them next week. Our climate culture, so I'll say here, a lot of the goals that we've accomplished throughout our, our work for pairs have been mostly organic. We have not done any purposeful build towards a lot of these items, except for the, where it comes to the equity and those hardware items, the, the physical things that we can handle. Climate culture is a, is much more technically equal. So it's, it's harder to put down just the actions that we've done to make that. But so a lot of this is going to come to how we interact with the parish departments around the school. So training is something that we've always kind of struggled with, PD in general, with other, with teachers. It's difficult to get time with them. It's difficult to get any kind of training going out. So our, our teams roll up and then problematic because of that. So we're still sporadically providing that, that training. What we want to get to is this monthly training session with staff where we have some topics that they need to know about. And then we have a monthly, you know, roundtable or meeting within the department to give this variety of training to the staff members. A lot of this is things that we want to do. We're still working towards getting standing up surveys. I do plan to stand up surveys before the end of the year to gauge a few of these things, newsletters, bulletins that they can then refer to. Come back in the end of the school year, get another bulletin, another survey and get some updates. High expectations is something that our department really does strive for. We feel pressured, we feel the, the need to perform at a high level because of the amount of students that we have and the, some limited staff and being able to support all of them. So we see high expectations is allowing our staff to bring us the easiest way possible to submit problems. So that we can, we can get to their needs as soon as possible. So some of these things are going to help to streamline that process to get staff the right training, right tools, to get their problems to us quicker and allow us to respond to them in a quicker and more robust fashion. A lot of these things, they never exist within our department, or if they did, they were just a word of mouth or a simple document. So these are items that we thought about, the red meaning that we discussed it, orange meaning that we have something planned and it's not yet in practice. SLAs come a lot into the service level agreements within our department. Expectations of how quickly someone should finish, we take it based on its priority and its impact to the district. It's difficult to do in our current state, but we do hope to get there within this next year. One thing that's a big part, and you've worked this kind of through as a team, Jan Dean, the person that drives our, our one and need to work as a, as a cohesive group. We work through lunches every month. We'll have one team lunch. We will, you know, discuss things or hopefully not work late and know each other better. It would take an hour and this is usually a pop-up type deal. So everyone's going to bring their own item. Last month, we did a successful salad bar. This is our, almost our whole team. This was our wellness salad bar. We come together during this time. People cooked their own thing. J D, one of our engineers, he spoke to me. He brought some steak and chicken, wellness salads. And it was, it was very fun and we're going to try to do that again. I think we have Chinese and Mexican on our next, next list of lunches. Try to promote some of our physical health as well, which is a key and a lot to this. Digital wellness, they did not put the link in here, our content filter, which controls what students can and cannot get to. They provided a digital wellness page, something that is provided to families so that they can get better understanding of dangers out on the internet, how to affect their children at home and at school. And they can go in there, they can type in Minecraft and they can find this professionally developed assessment of what Minecraft is, dangers of life out and how they can go about helping their, their child with that, you know, right? Yeah, our partnerships, our partnerships come a lot into play with different departments. We, we have a lack of cross-apartmental collaboration. We have a strategic vision that I think we have aligned with what our goals are. And that does not meet with the same needs at each building as, as they, as they meet there. So we have not organ, we have not specifically had these meetings in the past. And it's something that we've started to do with my partner in teaching and learning and having these conversations with the building coaches, with staff members. And me, as I grow into the role still, learning what all of these partnerships mean. I feel a lot of the partnerships also going to be with families, being able to get information out there on our website in a publicly available area that is curated content that we have made available, the privacy policies, the software that their students use. Anything that a family might need to know about that we control, we want to make available so they can see it and kind of develop those partnerships. Also the guides, there's a lot of training aspects that come with partnerships as well. So making guides available is a plan that we want to have. We don't have anything in place yet on these, on these guides. With these dashboard metrics though, I feel that we have a very, very good target set that we can start developing these plans and move a lot of these reds and yellows into greens and yellows. That is everything that I have on our updated cares plan. And it is open now for questions, comments, praises and concerns. Do you?
We'll argue over if we get to the first. First of all, I'd love to have a mom bear of my life. So if you'd like to adopt me, I'm open. I, so thank you for sharing all of this. I, as I was hearing all of the goals that you've set for your department, one of the lingering thoughts that kept coming back into my mind was, I wondered if you are connecting with our PR department in terms of rolling out training or communication. A good example is I was walking through the halls of To Home Elementary with Jerry today and we popped into a couple of rooms and they have their, their new touchscreens. And of course, that's such an amazing opportunity that we've provided for teachers to be able to take advantage of this new technology. But with that, there's a learning curve and for a lot of them, they have no idea where to start, how to even turn it on. So the thought can, of using this new technology can feel very daunting. And then of course, we're not getting a good return on our investment because they don't know how to use this effectively for student learning. So how, what kinds of plans do you have in mind for training? And I'm wondering about the PR connection because I'm wondering if there's a way to do it so that you aren't having to go to every building. I imagine there are YouTube videos that could be put in an email. But is there, is there a way to do this training without just a lot of extra man hours required in more end?
Uh, no, not really not to have it done effectively, but with my teaching and learning partner, we have come up with a very exhaustive training schedule for this. And by the beginning of next school year, we plan to actually have at least one hour for every single teacher under their belt. And in many cases, it will be more than that one. Every day that these things come in the building, we have a person that is going out and making sure that each teacher is at least comfortable to start using it that day. And this is a, someone that came with those touchscreen panels. So they're trained to use them, they're trained to teach them on a curriculum. They're a certified teacher as well. So they really, they really do know the stuff and they are paramount in the, in the delivery of these. Throughout the communication part, they actually did come up with a video. I'm not sure if it's been posted out yet, but it was shared with the community on the rollout of these so that it's, they're aware of it. When it comes to the training aspect, we're trying to make that, I'll call it the goal of service. So that the, the education consultant is there, given that goal of service, getting the teacher set up so that they're able to be successful that day. And then continue that through as we go. We have that person for one year. So even after the rollout day, we'll still be working with each group, each teacher as things come up and to have this very exhaustive training schedule. We don't want this investment to go away. So we do very, much so plan to have it be the, the solution for this, this front classroom.
Thank you.
I remember last year, you briefly touched on connectivity issues that I, I think that we spoke about that. And I, I'm just wondering if you could refresh my memory and also let me know where we're at kind of in terms of, do we have, two, two questions really, do we have pockets within our boundaries where kids can't get service at home, can't get internet? Do we have, and then also what do we do for the kids who maybe it's a financial burden for them to have internet at home? Because I know every night my kids are cracking up their, cracking up their readers or whatever it's like. So can we talk about those?
Sure. So as far as the, the need for like hotspots or something within the district, we, we haven't had much, we haven't had any requests. We have a total of forty, forty-five current students that are, that are getting a hotspot from the district. We, we have the open request. So students that ask for it, we do provide those as part of the tech levy that's been approved. So we're still providing those outside of the COVID fund to meet that equity need. So that, although it would be a good green metric, it hasn't changed. That's been something that To Home has been providing for a number of years now. So it's nothing that I've done, something that we've done to change that. What I need to do, I think more, more pointedly is to get the data from the community, find out who it is that's being underserved. That's something that working communications and sending surveys, some capacity, people may not know that they can get these things. So definitely working towards that. As far as within our campuses, our network is, is been fixed in two different situations since I started. situations since I started. It's working much better now than it has in the last six or seven years. And that, that kind of refreshes, continuing to make sure that we maintain that productivity.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate you guys.
Thank you so much for this. I, when I think of our technology department, I, I think of a really high-function Novella machine, very supportive, collaborative and so on. And I don't, I don't want to leave the wrong impression of the salat redet up on that screen. So, which in my mind is, we've got a lot of opportunity to make it even better. And this is going to be like a 15G superpower, massive, you know, machine by the time we're done with it. So I really, I love the ambition and the, how you selected the goals that you presented, that you could work towards achieving those individual things that will really support the students and the teachers in this district, the public kids be successful and the families beyond that. So thank you for being so thoughtful and selecting this kind of thing. And thank you for taking the time out tonight. So appreciate it. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We did, yes, yes. That will bring us to agenda item five point zero four, which is an action item to approve a budget request for updated twenty twenty-three, twenty-four technology plan. And yeah, we didn't go far, but here we are again. I just can't relate to present and answer questions. But before we get started, I would like to call for a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four technology plan. A motion to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four technology.
Second?
Next question, off to go.
Thank you.
Just bring out our slides. Let Trevor give a little bit, rest his voice a little bit. So we sent you our spending memo we come to every year, which is an updated view of what will be your spending be for the next year. And then we take that, of course, to, before it gets to you, it goes through our tech advisory process. Then we group the community members, teachers, and administrators that help us.
Hey, that's my bad.
It's a great community group and we, we do get quite a bit of good discussion. And in particular, at this particular beginning, we talked only about our plan for this year, but also started doing some thinking about our next four-year plan. So that is, that is, here we go. Back to where we are. Thanks, AJ.
Good teaching.
Technology, right? Our tech advisory did, did support the plan that we're bringing to you tonight. And we always show you what we imagined the four-year, year four spend was going to be and what we think we're going to spend next year. And so you can see those numbers there. What we tried to do in the memo to you was identify in the big areas where there's some variability. And we'll highlight a couple of those tonight and of course answering questions you might have. Here we go. So, but first, oh my goodness, nail the clicker. It's a challenge. Wanting to just give a little bit of context to how we even, how we even buy here. And the, of course, we started back, this four-year tech plan was written in twenty nineteen, but it was a much different place. And, oops. So the, and we, we project as best we can with the spending over four years. But even if you imagine you were doing this for your household budget, what you thought you were going to spend in twenty-three, twenty-four, what you were going to be spending on, when you've decided what you thought that would be in twenty nineteen, it's pretty different. You get more clarity in each year. And so it's not surprising that we had some changes this year, especially given that this is really more what it looks like for me, worse than normal four-year stance, definitely. So here we are with some changes. And those changes, not surprisingly, are the things you see listed there. Of course, costs change, which shifts some strategies, needs change. There are things sometimes that weren't in the original plan because they weren't originally identified as something that we would need. In the shifts in strategies areas, just a couple that we highlighted, we tried to note anything that was a premature piece in the notes column there. But of course, as you know, our flat panel project is a big shift in strategy. We did not foresee that happening back in twenty nineteen. Since twenty nineteen, we moved from Skype to Microsoft Teams. We've moved from a plan where we were going to be one-to-one at second year, we just at a classroom level, to actual take-home devices. So all of those things, then we had a bunch of other things, training, device needs, all of those pieces. The biggest shift in strategy, the most recent one, of course, is our shift to the interactive flat panels that you were lucky enough to see at TV the other day. And we are just right now rolling out those two with our broader distribution to all schools, to home elementaries this week. And as Trevor, Trevor mentioned, we, we have a gold glove service with our implementation specialist, which is great. And then every school gets a full, two opportunities for training within a week of their delivery. So there's, when we went around and even did the gold glove service, I was with our implementation specialist Monday morning when we were doing, or Tuesday morning, I guess. You know, we reassured every teacher, like, this is your initial, like, let's get you so you have a four-digit hint so you can get in it. This is not your training, right? But we just wanted to get them to that, to that place where they felt comfortable having it in their room until they could get their training either Friday or next Tuesday. And we'll repeat that again and again at every school, then again in the summer, and again in August. So we've got, been plans for taking it beyond too, which will be, which will be great.
Yeah, she's developed, or we've developed an entire pyramid of six dots getting to that, that ultimate goal of, what's the, what's the term for that?
That the, that this panel becomes a integral learning resource in the classroom. So it really is a resource for learning, not just a projection device, not just a teacher tool and that sort of piece of, because that's what we've seen in some other school systems where, oh, look at that, kids are going up to the board figuring out how to do something and various things. So thanks for pointing that out. Just as it's been the past years, we've had some carryover spending from other years and getting really, you know, capable at. So we're able to spend some more money on self-development, back development next year than we thought we were going to be able to. But that's because we didn't spend it in prior years because we didn't need to or we couldn't use for various reasons, subways and other examples of that. And then there are examples throughout the last four years of new spending that just wasn't part of our original spending plan. And we called out some of those things. The one that, the one that we're, I thought that we're kind of pretty excited about is making sure that we include our elementary set refresh. That was not part of the original plan inadvertently, really. And so we made sure that that's a part of it. So they're getting some new robots and then partnering with communications around improving our, and improving the equation of parent communication and hoping with that. So we've seen pictures just from our elementary stem with the home bots. And I'll be meeting with them on Friday to talk about, more about just what their needs are in the next, in the next four years. Those are just our highlights. We are here to answer your questions. Who might have about the, of what they have for next year?
I don't have any questions, shockingly, but I just thought your memo was very clear. And so, yeah, thank you.
Same vote. I, I had questions and you answered them. I didn't want to hear remarks. I really appreciate that. Yeah. The one question I guess I had was looking back over the four years, we have some ebbs and flows of spending, but the amount that we plan to spend in four years is still the amount that we plan to spend in four years. Is that right?
Yeah. Yeah, we're always working within those boundaries. So that's a change.
Super. And we calculated out to, I mean, within a hundred thousand of the actual amount that we expect to get with the flat panel project. Really kind of pushed us into getting that full year and a half to two-year spending under our belts. So that we weren't going to leap over to have that project open.
Good. Yeah, with that, I'll, I'll for vote, all in favor.
Aye.
Our vote aye, and the motion passes four to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
That'll bring us to agenda five point zero five, which is the approval, the actual to approve cell tower agreement. It's a burden of others, it's kind of a little bit weird here, but while he does that, please have a motion to approve the event of the cell tower lease agreement. Sure, I am going to approve agenda five point zero five, actually to approve cell tower.
Second?
Second, thank you. Here's Kyle.
Hi, everybody. Yeah, evening. Just a little background on this. This is the cell tower that is located on the Cedar River campus. It's derived out of the building on the left-hand side there. The initial base was a five-year base that entered nineteen ninety-nine. And there's consecutive five years standing on that that expired soon in twenty twenty-four, made, didn't make it to twenty-four. This is a, this period for extending that by five years under another twenty years. This was not a short process. There was some meetings that went back and forth that first was considering we have some kind of rover come in and see what we can get the best prices. Did some research on those different areas and found that, had our rural school district, local property, probably, I had some personal contacts over Eastern Washington, Eastern Washington, and actually leased and sold property that has the cell towers on it and did some comparisons over this contract. Make a bet versus what they were getting in rural areas over there, so I can close, but a little different on the west side here. I say make a bet because at that date I was able to come back and say, hey, we're not quite comparing just other sites, but I can see what the communities here. And after some conversation, that we were able to increase what they were offering, I guess, what we would accept with our property, not necessarily with potential basis agreement. And then in addition to that, also quite a legal discussions, just to make sure we were making the right decisions with this, they call it monopole over there, Cedar River. And wanting to be sure that our school district is in the best position possible, you doubt if we can let any access. If there's any needed adjustments on the tower or access needed for the tower, we make sure that it's following our district guidance, our, our district rules as far as if they're being on our site, we're checking the office. They're, they're game badge and it's certain part of our, if there's an emergency to make a contact, I, but even down to that, I need to hold on and make sure that we're doing the best we can. So just the overall terms of this, we've got twenty-four thousand dollars a year, that's one hundred and eight thousand for the life of the contract, plus five thousand if they call sign. So this is a selling.
Questions?
Questions? I, I guess I got one of these. Part of this contract, the, the group was looking at adding additional carrier to the boom. So I just want to make sure to call that a T boom would be added as a subletment of the monopole.
Is that additional equipment or is it?
It is still one whole additional equipment up there. There'd be some, it'd be the same footprint of property defenses wouldn't go out or anything. There'd be page thirty, this kind of brief picture of what would be ahead, just kind of this path to wires and then an additional, yeah.
Would you want to talk to the reviewing of the property and first assessing whether there was any need in the district east side before we actually do the?
Yeah, so always wanting to make sure that we can do the best for our schools. Cedar River, I don't know if you've noticed, has a little bit of an access problem with our care pickup. I experienced it today at four o'clock, it was great. There was some conversation whether or not we could adjust the entryway in Cedar River there and if that was the best location. And through the conversations of the, I don't want to say feasibility study, we could go quite good up there, but there was quite an ingrained equipment. And I think this right there that she asked would make it possible. So there was talk of, is that the best location for a cell tower versus something that would allow easier access for persons? And through a couple of blocks on that property, we talked with the local utility companies, which is what we think we'll replace that cell tower very, very effectively that property. Is that accurate?
Could you, I'm, I'm scrolling here, but I'm not hiding it. I'm curious, how much more revenue than we should have?
So the previous contract was twelve thousand dollars per year. And then there was a clause that said with inflation, we go up. So between that twelve thousand initial and our twenty-four thousand, it was about, oh, I think there were twenty-three, five or it's twenty-three for the initial. And then very, we gave it up to that twenty-four thousand. It's almost like huge injuries, but that brought us, just to be transparent, what I was looking at over in the Fulton area, they were selling the piece of property for five hundred thousand, whereas we're coming close to five hundred in Virginia Department.
Great, thank you. And thank you for doing that.
Yeah. It was like, it's fun. It was a great learning experience and being able to make sure we're competitive, right? We're looking at potential income for the school district. I want to make sure we put this right first, will you, not to skip some of it.
That's fair. Thank you.
So I'm just looking at paragraph ten of the agreement, talks about the insurance and references the requirement that they have a commercial liability policy in there.
That formula, not a piece?
Yeah. I know sometimes there's, commercial policies don't always include like personal injury coverage on it. Do you know if this one does? I'm just thinking that there's this thing sitting in the middle of our property, which our insurance should cover that, should cover the rest of our property, but we're not technically maintaining this piece of, piece of privilege in our group. So do you know if it covers like personal?
I can't say for sure that I do. I can say that we went from a million dollar policy before, that that was negotiated in there.
I'm just, I'm not quite sure myself. I didn't know we had a risk pool, we didn't contract it as well as our true.
Any kind of answer?
If they, as far as I understand.
Multiple reviews.
And I think to a comment of, one of the comments that we made earlier is the right one. We all have reviewed this, I reviewed this, I reviewed this in detail. I reviewed lots of copies in my time. So I just want to kind of bring that up on the, as a point of order that we get these things, we do look through them, we ask questions, we have opportunities to do that prior to bringing them to a vote. So for people who are listening online, watching online, it's, I'm going to make sure. Yeah, I agree. I feel so relieved. And actually, proud, wonderful presentation, very thoughtful of you. Again, that's your question that I have with your department. So you were getting at the same thing as the new work. I appreciate that.
Yeah, I was able to have a short process. It was out of six months.
Any questions? Okay, I'll call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Our vote aye, and the motion passes four to zero.
So to have, so, so being a behavior specialist, did that conversation back and forth, they go to you?
Thanks, Scott. Don't blow a good thing. Bring this to agenda five point zero six, which is another action item to approve resolution twenty twenty-three oh seven, authority to employ non-supervised, certified personnel in twenty twenty-three and twenty-four. And Assistant Director of resources, Scott Mitchell, you can talk to him.
All right.
And you'll need, we, oh, yeah, excuse me. I'm sorry. I got a head on something. May I hear a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three oh seven.
Sure.
I am going to approve the agenda five point zero six, action to approve resolution, resolution twenty twenty-three oh seven, authority to employ non-supervised, certified personnel for twenty twenty-three and twenty-four.
Excellent.
Okay. And now, Mr.?
All right. These are the documents that authorize the issuing of contracts to a certificate staff under the TDA contract. So the request tonight is to approve that resolution. The resolution is there along with the two different types of contracts, which is a continuing and a provisional. Provisional is for new employees that are in their first three years. And then the continuing is for those that have continued. This is an annual thing and those contracts get issued out in the middle of May.
No questions? No questions here. I'll call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, and the motion passes four to zero. Which brings us to agenda item five point zero seven, which is our finance enrollment report, which Mr. Mandis. Even Bill?
Even. All right, thanks, AJ. Can you go to page three for me? Awesome, thank you, sir. As we promised last month, a lot of changes, big changes to the March estimate. So what you're looking at right here is our budget versus estimate reconciliation. What this is saying is how do we go from a budget reduction fund balance of nine point four million to a current estimated reduction fund balance of nine point seven? The real question is how do we go from last month, the same thing, uh, the estimated reduction fund balance is eleven point one? And then how do we go from that to nine point seven? So what I'm going to do is just walk through the line by line, so everybody has a good understanding of that. So again, budget reduction fund balance of minus nine point four million, um, this was approved by school board last July. No changes there. Take a look at the first line down, LDA funding plans one point eight million. No change that has, now it's our top priority, when we talk to state legislators. Um, that being said, the state legislature essentially closed on Sunday. Um, we are still processing, the, the district and LSU itself are still processing changes that had occurred, um, at the legislative level. Um, from what we do understand, did receive a portion of our LDA funding back. We're still trying to determine the exact amount and what we received as this year or next year, all this year, so on and so forth. So more updates to count. Uh, we do know that one point eight should go down, um, assuming this year. Um, down, good way, so back to zero. Hopefully. Um, next line down, enrollment shortfall, this is something that was on this reconciliation last month. We took the budget last month, it's minus one hundred and fifty-two thousand. This month is about a minus nine hundred and twenty thousand. The enrollment projected FTE decrease by additional, additional beats of students, um, from last month. So that's something that we're also looking to do in conversations with the health, maybe your schedule, um, you know, people in schools across the issue. Talking about the enrollment decline. But that being said, we are still on par with our pre-go numbers. So we're back into O E three. Um, new line, that transportation funding increased about one point one million. This was directly related to OSPI's updates, updates to the SARS, the state transportation, uh, something reporting standards. It's from the air off the top of my head. Um, the base, they changed the formula, um, to allow to, to fund school shares more. That being said, our change in formula relates to about an additional one point one million dollars this year to be worth to be have a corporate estate. Uh, no changes to the next line, just something that's local revenue. Slight change in food service funding, this is additional supply chain assistance, cranks, will be warrants, catering run, um, received by the funding E U S D A in the amount of, make sure a hundred and forty thousand dollars, we did this line last month, it was about a hundred and forty-two K, so slight increase there. And an additional, um, in the next line, they have an additional hundred thousand dollar increase for our special services. If you look at the following section, the unexpected expenditure changes, uh, we had meeting, district director, dispensing, incident, all that. And, um, Monday we looked at how we are currently handling our S R, that's our COVID, press, the money funds. Um, and we realized that we are able to re-allegedly code some of our expenditures to those funds, which means it's additional, um, savings to the district. That's why it's initially two hundred thousand dollars in the bottom line. That being said, our estimated induction fund balance has decreased from eleven point one million last month to about nine point seven this month. Um, like I said earlier, we, and LSU are still processing all the changes to the, to the budget of the state legislative level. Uh, we'll have more changes to come in the next few months as we process those early. Any questions?
I have a question about the special services enrollment increase number. And it, obviously we, we received more funds, but I assume that the increase in our ELL enrollment also required, and tier two support is also required, an increase in expenditures. Was that a net zero or do you happen to know what the difference was between those two?
So this is the net of.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I, I just, uh, I, I continue to, to appreciate the work that you're doing to refine the materials that come before us, information that comes before us. Um, you're, you're continually looking for opportunities to, uh, increase precision and get better information for the district and how we are making decisions around this. And, um, it's incredibly valuable. So I just want to say thank you for that. Um, uh, the information that we have now is, is really informative, um, gives us some direction. So, uh, and I really appreciate the precision you already have, the fact we want to make it sharper. Thank you.
I had great teachers.
Okay, that's, that's all for now. Thank you, Bill. Uh, that'll bring us to section six of our agenda, leading the portion of our, of our meeting. Um, and agenda item six point zero one, which is an action item to approve our consent agenda. And please have a motion to approve our consent agenda.
Sure, I move to approve agenda item six point zero one, action to approve consent.
Second.
First and second, do I, uh, any discussion? Here now, I'll call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, which passes four to zero. That brings us to agenda item six point zero two, an action item to approve our certified personnel report. May I please have a motion to approve our certified personnel report?
Sure, I move to approve agenda item six point zero two, action to approve certified personnel.
Second.
Moved in seconded, any discussion? Here now, I'll call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, and the motion passes four to zero. Thank you. Uh, agenda two point zero three is an action item to approve our classified personnel report. Uh, may I please have a motion to approve our classified personnel report?
Sure, I move to approve the agenda item six point zero two, action to approve the classified personnel report.
Second.
Moved in seconded, any discussion? Here now, I'll call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, and the motion passes four to zero. And that brings us to agenda item six point zero four, uh, coach personnel report. An action item to approve our coach personnel report. May I please have a motion to approve our coach personnel report?
Sure, I move to approve the agenda item six point zero four, action to approve coach personnel.
Second.
We moved in seconded, any discussion? Here now, I'll call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
I vote aye. And that motion passes four to zero, which brings us to agenda item seven point zero one, adjournment at eight oh eight P M. Thank you, everybody, and wonderful evening.